Order the December 11th, 2023 Kingston Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So we have a couple items under our first appointments. We need to appoint Mary Eggleston as the Town Treasurer until March. This is due to the resignation of Jane. Jane Ramey, yes. Let me find this in here. So we would just need a motion to appoint Mary Egglestein to the position of Town Treasurer, a term to expire on March 12th, 2024. Any further discussion? And just so if she wanted to continue this, she would have to run for the remainder of the appointment in March.
Is she here tonight?
Yes, there she is.
Would she like to address the board at all?
Anything to say? Do you want to come forward and say anything?
You would like us to appoint you?
Yes.
Okay.
And so what we'll do is, since Tammy's here, Tammy's probably here downstairs. So once we vote, we can all sign it, and you can probably go downstairs and get sworn right in. That'd be fantastic.
And currently, just for clarity and for information, I mean currently you are the Deputy Town Treasurer. What is the official title? It is Deputy. Deputy Town Treasurer, okay. And so it's the logic, in the statutes anyway, it's the logical progression when the treasurer leaves that the deputy then takes the spot, but needs to be appointed to fill out the remainder of that time until town elections. And should you then choose to run, you can do that at that time.
Perfect. All right, so we'll move to question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we'll pass this around and then we can...
But don't we have a proposed Deputy Town Treasurer sitting here, well-known to many of us already? She's hiding the...
Yes. Okay, I just didn't see any... I mean, we can, if you want to prepare the paperwork, did you want to come up and say anything? You sure? So would we like to entertain a motion to have her appointed to the Deputy Treasurer? All right.
Second.
Person of second, any... Donna Clark. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you both very much. We're getting this signed. We do just need to make sure we get a copy back. Okay, fantastic. Did I already lose that? It wouldn't surprise me. I just misplaced my agenda. I was going off of. Oh, there we go. Right where I left it. Right where I left it. Okay, so we, our next item is the Town Clerk and reference zoning warrant articles. There's a preference that we don't print the full text of the articles on the ballot, and there's some note here, notes here from the decision to do a topical description of the articles for anyone that was present for the planning boards. Zoning warrant articles, I believe we had 27 pages of zoning articles, some of them very lengthy. So I think it'd be more appropriate, quite frankly, I think if you do a topical description, sometimes you actually give a better understanding than just trying to read the article verbatim.
Having served as a moderator for 35 years, let me tell you, they don't read that stuff. They do not, for the most part. And we voted a year ago to do a condensed version to minimize the cost of printing 27 pages. We have 26 articles. It's probably more than 27 pages. And I would strongly urge my colleagues to vote for the adopt, the adopted consolidated version. The articles still need to be made available to the public. And in due conscience, we should probably make copies available at the town hall so that people can pick up a full copy to read. Usually they go by the recommendation at the end by the planning board and/or board of selectmen and do that. But they may want to look at it more clearly, and we've got to provide that opportunity.
As long as we post it ahead of time where they can read the full text online, have copies available at the town hall if they wish. Because I will say, on the day of, most people, that's not when they're really diving into zoning articles. But we had them present last year, posted, posted on kind of like the billboard as well as some full text copies as well.
We didn't have 27 articles either.
Correct.
And I'm really kind of disappointed that so many have been presented at one time.
You have to. It's, there's so much language that has to get clarified because it's either unenforceable or, you know, it's been reviewed. And I mean, one of the items is, I think it was 11 pages long. And if we don't update it, people will not qualify for floodplain insurance under the FEMA guidelines. So you can't, you can't not take that up.
So, I mean, I realize the reason for, you know, for the topical description, and I agree that it can be done that way, and in some cases that works. Given the number of articles, it's probably the right way to do it, at least this year. But I mean, in general, I'm one who is in favor of the full text because a lot of people either won't know where to go to get the full text or won't do that much investigation ahead of time. So again, it's, if the topical description has enough information in it, you know, it can work. And if we can take extra steps to get the full text out by whatever means, on the website, on our, you know, a link to it on our, on the town's Facebook page. The town also has an email blast system, which some people have subscribed to. And I would ask that if we do it this way, that the full text be distributed to folks who take advantage of that email information system.
I fully appreciate the need to disseminate the information to the voters. That's absolutely, no question about it. But we cannot have 27 pages of ballots on this, just on the articles here. You're never, you're going to need to double the amount of machines that we rent, the chips that we process, the physical ballot boxes, the number of people there, because you cannot process that many ballots.
And as I said, just to clarify, in this particular case, this year, I agree that that's the right way to go. In general, I don't agree with it, but...
We can agree to disagree next year.
Yeah, but for this year, for this year, I'm okay with it as long as the topical descriptions are have enough, well, no, have the topical descriptions in the ballot have enough information in them so that when somebody reads it, they get a good sense for what's going on, not, you know, not something very brief. I mean, it needs to be substantial enough.
They do have to be posted at the polls as well.
Right, but I, but beyond that, we need to, I really think that we need to reach out and make sure that we push it out there as best we can.
Tammy made the point too. She could print them out to have people take in the booth with them. That would be cheaper than putting it on the ballot, even if she printed them.
Well, I think, I think that's good.
That's a good idea, too.
So that's an option.
I mean, for someone who does want to read them, and if they didn't read them ahead of time, at least they have that opportunity.
All right, so in order to move forward this, we would just need a motion to conserve text on the ballot by placing topical descriptions in lieu of text for the zoning, planning board zoning warrant articles. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The appointment. Where'd that end up? It's right there.
It's here. Thank you, Chuck. I'm honored.
We're going to open up a public hearing. This hearing is to accept unanticipated funds in the amount of $31,343.68 from the state of New Hampshire as a special one-time bridge payment for maintenance, construction, and reconstruction of municipally-owned bridges. We have a letter and packets regarding this. Due to the fact this is a public hearing, I am just going to read this in its entirety. This is addressed to the Kingston Select Board. It's reference a Kingston special one-time bridge payment in accordance with House Bill 2 payment for maintenance, construction, and reconstruction of municipally-owned bridges. It references a former selectman, but the following is notification of a one-time bridge payment being made available to your municipality in state fiscal year 2024. Based on the passage of House Bill 2 effective July of 2023, House Bill 2 directs the department to divide and distribute $10 million one-time payment between all New Hampshire municipalities that have municipally-owned bridges per state definitions. 50% of the distribution is based on your municipality's percentage of statewide municipal bridge deck surface and area, and the remaining 50% of the distribution is based on your municipality's percentage of statewide population. This one-time bridge payment is not related to all the quarterly block grant aid payments that a municipality receives. The payment can only be used on the maintenance, construction, or reconstruction of municipally-owned bridges. These are non-lapsing funds. No funds appropriated under this section shall be used to supplant locally budgeted and approved funds for bridge maintenance or construction. The funds appropriated in this section may be considered unanticipated money under RSA 31,95-B and may be accepted and extended pursuant to RSA 31,95-B, Roman numeral 2 through Roman numeral 4, whether or not a political subdivision has adopted the provisions of RSA 31,95-B. This one-time payment is anticipated to be available to the town of Kingston during the month of December 2023 as follows. December 2023 actual bridge payment, $31,343.68, and signed by Municipal Highways Engineer Bureau of Planning and Community Assistance, C.R. Wilecki. So any questions before the board, before I open it up for public comment, since it is a public hearing? Okay, I will open it up. Is there any comments from the public on this matter? I will close public comments on this hearing, and I would take a motion to authorize the town to accept the actual bridge payment of $31,343.68. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, thank you. So we're going to close that public hearing. Now we have another public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider dissolving the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. I will, this was brought up by Selectman Laurie Sfed, so I'll allow her to speak to it first before we open it up.
With the recent resignation of the chairperson and the minimal number of volunteers that we have on the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, I've spoken with Phil Coombs, the Director of Department of Public Works, and we're requesting that, he's at the trustee of the trust funds meeting, so he'll be here as soon as he can. We're requesting that the committee be dissolved so that we can still continue, the volunteers continue to support the collection center and do some article drafting for education purposes and just have a very informal group of volunteers. So that, since we don't have the turnout that we'd like, we just don't, we don't see any other avenue. We still want to continue supporting the collection center, but we don't see it, at this point, the formality of the committee.
The committee has been extremely helpful to the town. They've definitely formulated a lot of great initiatives to bring recycling together. They reviewed the contract and the most recent contract from waste management. And so we are, we are wedded to them for another four years. But in three years' time, we would need to again review the contract to see what other opportunities were available to us. If the committee wants to disband, the formality of the committee wants to disband the committee. But I don't want that to be construed as they're not needed or wanted to participate in supporting the solid waste recycling program because there's still a lot of educational initiatives that need to be implemented to get people used to, number one, not putting in glass in the trash and putting it where it's supposed to, and on and on and on. So I guess I feel a little conflicted, but...
Well, we don't plan on stopping what we're doing. The, on Saturday, I believe we had 57 people come through, which was 14 more than the week before. So the initiative and the motivation is there. So we, because we don't have the numbers, we wouldn't, we would have a chair and then two people? I mean, we just don't have the numbers for a formal committee, but we have the motivation and the dedication to continue the work, just in a less formal arena, because we don't, the formality of the noticing a public meeting and having to do the minutes when you have three or four people, it just doesn't make any sense. And when we don't have somebody to be the chair. We can meet more informally and push things through a little quicker, you know, it would just report directly, you know, it would just be under the purview of the Public Works as opposed to reporting to the Select Board.
Is, and this is just semantics probably, but the request here is to consider dissolving, which means in my, my understanding would be that it just goes away? If there's a chance that we would want to resurrect it at some point, would it be better to perhaps make it inactive? Or does that not matter?
In my view, it's semantics. I mean, if it's not, if we don't have the people, I mean, we couldn't, we'll continue to ask for volunteers, and actually, somebody that came to the collection center asked how they could volunteer there, and I'm like, just show up. I mean, you don't, there's nothing formal about that. You know, I don't think, I think it's six of one, half dozen of the other. It's not going to be an active group of people in the way that it is right now. So whether we dissolve it or make it inactive, that is purely semantics.
Okay.
You still probably will want a contact person, maybe one of the members of the Select Board like yourself could be the contact person, so that something could be on our website saying, there's no official solid waste committee, but if you're interested in helping with the recycling program, contact.
Well, I think, I think Phil's take is that they field all the phone calls about recycling and trash anyway, so they'll just continue to field the phone calls, right? Because that's who people call anyway when they have a question or their their bin loses a wheel or something, right? So I think that's probably going to be the conduit, because that's who people call.
I just don't want it to be misconstrued that they're not needed or wanted.
Oh, I, you know, the, the atmosphere that was there on Saturday was great. Everybody that showed up, it was fabulous, and I don't, I don't see that stopping.
Okay, any more from the board? It is a public hearing. We'll open it up for public comment. I know you know the drill, but for anyone else's benefit, please come forward, push the button on the microphone until the button is green. You have to state your name and address, and then please address the board.
Stacy Dion, 30 Morning Dew. I am the chair that resigned, and I just want to state that I am disappointed in how this is being handled of dissolving this solid waste and recycling committee. It has not been discussed at committee. I had a member of the committee reach out to me and ask if we've all been fired because they weren't communicated that this was happening. This committee was formed, and we've done a lot of work. But for it not to be brought to a committee meeting and discussed before coming to a public hearing or coming to the Select Board is not how it should be. When we came here in August and we talked about how the ordinance should be written about the Select Board, each person had an equal vote of that Select Board. And that this Department of Public Works was a member, but that, that to me, in a time of not being able to get volunteers in a committee for two people of that committee to be able to go to the Select Board and ask for it to be dissolved without talking to the committee, is not what should be happening. This, that conversation should have happened at a committee so that we could discuss it and see what it would look like and what the changes would be. And that alone is very upsetting to me and to other people who are volunteering their time and then not hearing about it, and then it goes to a public hearing to dissolve the committee. I understand that there's no chair currently, but some type of discussion should have happened at the committee, and we should have been, the committee should have been notified that this was going to go to the Select Board and be discussed, or the recommendation should come from the committee, as we wrote in the ordinance. The other part is, is that there is an ordinance. The ordinance that we had proposed in August states that there is a solid waste and recycling committee. When we decided we were going to update it to change how that ordinance was, was, was written, we went to legal to get, to get any information on whether it could be a public hearing or it would need to go to town vote. To change that ordinance or to get rid of the cycling, recycling committee, legal gave us and said the town, or any changes to town ordinance need to be adopted by the town meeting, which means it needs to be a warrant article and go to vote before we can change it or get rid of it or change anything that's currently written. I am concerned that going to a, not a committee and not reporting to the Select Board, we've had some ongoing issues of where things in the committee have not gone to committee and have made it into public that were incorrect or wrong. And without going and reviewing at the committee, there's nobody to catch those issues or to process them. A lot of what has happened has happened to have to be cleaned up. So we requested email addresses, and we didn't do it in an appropriate manner. And so now I've had to email everyone and ask them to sign up in a different manner. And those are things that are caught at the committee level and need to go through the evaluation. I am concerned that a lot of people on this committee don't like the way the committees work and that they like, they would like things to go quicker. I understand that. I get it. But these are laws that the town of Kingston follows and the state of New Hampshire follows. And we should not be dissolving a committee just because it's inconvenient. We should be following it, especially since there's an ordinance.
Thank you. I guess, how many, how many people are currently, how many people is the committee supposed, is there a minimum that we're supposed to have, and where are we currently?
So I believe that there were four ordinances that we had proposed, three of them that we were getting rid of, and the other one was a complete rewrite. So I think the ordinances on the books don't even really cover the solid waste and recycling committee as it is today. So the ordinances that we proposed were changing the composition of what's on the books to what it is today. Clearly, that was proposal. So it's nothing. What's on the books is on the books, and it does not reflect what is being done today.
The proposal was six people. With my resignation and the addition of someone who joined at the last meeting, it would still be six.
So I'm not sure if either of you can answer. In the current language as it exists without changes, there's specific references to the committee and the ordinance?
The, the, um, the ordinance 501, 502, 503 states that there is a solid waste and recycling committee.
I don't think that's what it's called, though. Is it? I think it's a little different than what we were proposing. And we recommended deleting three of them, or two of them.
And completely rewriting one of them. But it's still the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, so just looking right on our, I mean, the title of it, the title of 501 is Solid Waste Management Planning Committee.
That's solid waste. This is solid waste recycling. So we don't have an ordinance that governs what we're doing right now. And I understand that there's, there are ordinances on the books, but we could go through all of the ordinances, and, you know, there are things that just don't happen. And 501 through, I think, 503 or 504 just don't happen. That's why we were going to delete them. And that's why we're completely rewriting one.
Rewrite one and have it go to warrant article to be approved. And we requested for the change, and it was stated that we would need to go to town vote.
So are we better off just suspending the activities at the moment since we have, I mean, we're not looking at, it would make more sense to suspend the formality of the committee by by not eliminating the regulations, because I don't see it going away. If anything, I see solid waste and recycling getting bigger, not smaller.
And I agree with that, but the ordinances that are on the books today don't cover what we're doing. So that's, that's kind of a moot point, right? So we would have to go and rewrite them anyway just to reflect what the committee, whether it's active or dissolved or whatever, is currently doing. So there's nothing that captures that. That's why we were going to rewrite it. Right? And still recommend that the three of them were being deleted because they're just not functional. Like, we don't perform those functions at all in the town. So...
And yeah, I guess my one concern is just because the way that it titles the committee, and I understand it's a semantics thing. I agree that if you guys, I wouldn't, I kind of agree more towards Glenn's idea of if we were going to take any action, I would feel more comfortable suspending or make it, moving to an inactive status. But because it's referenced directly in ordinance, unless we had an ordinance that was going to get changed and clarify all this. Now, out of curiosity, why, so why wasn't it kind of brought to committee first, like about the dissolving? I know you had had some conversations. I know you've talked about this a couple times. Is there any particular reason it wasn't brought for the whole committee for a discussion and a recommendation?
I think probably it just, that train just started moving, and we haven't had a meeting, and there's not one scheduled until this week. So I think it was just conversations that just, you know, just kept occurring. And clearly, it's just a recommendation, right? That's what we're...
Yeah, and I guess, you know, I think she brings up a very valid point that I would, I wouldn't want any committee in town to have the ability to be dissolved or placed inactive without them having input on it. I guess in a situation like this, you know, I support that, hey, if it's not effective at this time. But I guess I would prefer to see the committee say, yes, we as a committee, at least a majority of us, agree that we should be placed in an inactive or suspended status so that we can show that there's been input from the committee. Because I just, I don't think this was a nefarious or ill-willed thing. I just, I think it looks terrible that any committee could essentially be dissolved without even input from the committee at a public hearing. I wouldn't want to see that for any committee or board without them having an opportunity to give input.
Absolutely. The meeting is Thursday at 6:30, so...
Could we, given all of that, could we consider tabling this to our meeting next Monday, and in the meantime?
I think we should probably catch Phil up so he could...
And this can be discussed. Will you be there, Laurie, at that meeting on Thursday?
No, I won't be there.
Oh, you won't?
Nope.
Okay.
Anyone know if there's going to be enough people to have a quorum to have for the committee? So Phil, I know you just kind of walked into this. It was brought to the attention that this was never really formalized before the committee. I know two of you are members of the committee, but there was concern that the committee didn't have an opportunity to address this during a committee meeting and give their input and maybe solicit a vote from the committee. And I think our consensus is that we'd feel better if the committee actually put forward a recommendation, not just members who happen to be on the committee, so that, and that, it just, it doesn't look good that a committee can be dissolved without any input from them. So if you, if we think so, we could, I think we could table it. And then if for some reason that the committee doesn't have a quorum to meet, we could table it further at our meeting on Monday if needed more time to reschedule a meeting where more people can be present. can be present.
So this is a, I'm sorry, did you? So, so this is a public hearing, I'm just thinking process now. Is it, is it appropriate to table it or is it appropriate to continue the public hearing?
I think we'd have to continue it and post it as such as a continued public hearing because anyone would be able to come back in and we're not just going to come in and take a vote, we have to open it back up again to public comment at that time for any new information that's been presented.
You okay with that? Then that would be my motion.
Well, I guess, any other public comment before we move on?
Oh, that's right.
This topic, yeah, this is specifically a public hearing for this one. Yeah. Okay. I will close the public comment at this time for this hearing.
So I will move that we continue this public hearing to December 18th at, want to do it first off?
Yeah.
6:30, 6:30 PM here at Town Hall.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So as a notice to the public, anyone that has interested in this particular public hearing, it has been continued to our selectments meeting next Monday. And this is going to be kind of contingent on the solid waste recycling committee having an opportunity to meet. We may continue it if they haven't had time to come to us with a recommendation.
There is a possibility next Monday's meeting will be at the firehouse. Just, it'll be posted. We are waiting to make sure the room was usable. So just so people are aware, watch the agenda.
Yeah, we're gonna, I would imagine we will try to have it here so it can be televised. That would be our first priority.
Okay. All right, we are going to move on to public comment number one. This is an opportunity to talk about anything. Yeah, just come forward, please. So yeah, please, just have a seat, push the button until the light turns green and just tell us your name and your address and.
Okay, my name is Paul Riccio, 53 Newton Junction Road, Kingston, New Hampshire, 03848. I'm a new resident in town. In recent times, I came to discover that my wife and I, this is Jennifer, my wife, and my son Oakland Everly, my daughter, excuse me. And came to our attention that we had been overtaxed for the year of 2022. I was suggested to come here by the New Hampshire Department of Revenue. They suggested me to come here after speaking to Mrs. Eyre about the abatement form. And from what I understand, so to get my taxes abated, I have to fill out this form, which won't be decided until March. So I was, again, I was suggested to come here and just read a letter to you guys that I'll be submitting after this, my, what I have to say. So in regard to this, we are asking for you guys to, we're attempting to receive an abatement in the amount of $3,012.38 due to being overtaxed for the year of 2022. Prior to purchasing my family's property at 53 Newton Junction Road, the property was conveyed by Ms. Bissin and she had an elderly exemption of $105,000, which she was taxed accordingly. She also had a veteran's exemption, but she was also taxed accordingly. The July 22, 2022 tax bill was in the amount of $701.22. The subsequent bill issued for the December of 2022 was in the amount of $3,713.60 based on the total annual tax of $4,414.82. This tax amount is based on the full assessed value of the property instead of the reduced assessed value as of April 1st, 2022. Per the New Hampshire Assessing Reference Manual noted in chapter 74 colon 1, chapter 73 colon 1 and 72 colon 39, the assessed value for the property set on April 1st generally remains for the entire year. Also noted in RSA 76, uh, colon, sorry, 16, municipalities may abate taxes for good cause shown, which in this case seems evident. I'm asking for the board to review my scenario and put into consideration the time my family has already spent on this matter. I thank you all for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. And I, he had reached out to me to kind of explain the issue he was having and I suggested he come before the board. He obviously did some more speaking with the RA. He did look up some of the state laws and I did talk with you Susan kind of about this. I was just trying to figure out where, I, I think we were just trying to, we need to, I think one of the things we need to verify with the information this gentleman's going to provide is just on the state law because it, it appears as though as, I, I know it seems unlikely that somebody's abated tax, the exemption would continue, but it seems there may be language in the tax code that once it's set for the year, it's supposed to go from April to April.
That is true. And those were removed before they should have been, but it wasn't brought to our attention until the following year and that is the question. This went around to a lot of different people, so it got muddy for a while. So the last thing that I asked you to do was just put in the abatement form so that we could make a decision. I have to have it in writing for the board.
And I appreciate your consideration in regard to that. It also is, you know, like she said, you know, we've only owned the property for a little over a year. It's past the time that I was allowed to ask for this abatement, administrative abatement. But it still states in chapter 76 semi-colon 16 that the municipality may abate taxes for good cause shown, which again, I didn't, I wasn't aware I was overtaxed. My mortgage company immediately paid my taxes for the year and it came out of me in escrow. So when they did the re, the escrow analysis for the next year, that's when I was like, what's going on here? And then I had, I, you know, I'm a, we're first time homeowners. We've only owned for over a year now. Prior to that, thank you. So, you know, again, I've spent, excuse me, a lot of time doing the research. I've done a lot of phone calls as, you know, I've spoken to you, spoken to Susan and, you know, I've had spoken to the Department of Revenue in regard to this. So it's like, at this, at what point do, will the town just, you know, think that it's a fair assessment that I, I be abated this money? And if, if all else fails, I mean, I, you know, I just, I don't really want, I, I think that the form waiting till March is.
No, I don't, you don't have to wait until March. You just have, we can't, without numbers in front of us to make a formal motion on the amounts and stuff. And I think you have, you've articulated and you've described extenuating circumstances for your scenario and obviously you didn't, it wasn't, you just knew about this and didn't take it up until now. Like you said, you weren't notified until like your mortgage had kind of recast through the escrow and told you you're deficient in funds and with the verification, you know, I started looking at the information that you had presided because I have to verify that that was correct. And we have, you know, verified that, yeah, you're, that, that exemption was removed from your property too soon. So we understand that we bear a burden of that and, you know, that changes the fact of whether or not you have to, are eligible for an administrative abatement. But I think at this point, if you were to fill out that form and we could take it up at, at our next Monday's meeting, I think the board would have the information it needs to make a decision.
I have a form right here, so I've been, I, I can fill it out. I mean, I really, that, I thought that the time.
We just can't take it, we wouldn't be able to take it up tonight even if you filled it out right now.
No, no, I understand that, but I can come and drop it by, but I mean, I, I'd like to still submit this letter and if there's something that.
Absolutely. I think that's absolutely relevant to your situation and, and we would rather have that supporting documentation within the file.
Can I ask a question? And I don't have any issue with what you've described and, and, you know, please fill out the paperwork and get it to Susan so that we can deal with it next Monday night. But is this something that should have been caught during your closing process and was something not disclosed to you and maybe something not done correctly on the part of the?
I mean, I don't want to point fingers, but I don't think that's the case. I don't think that's what happened.
It was disclosed in the, at the closing. We had the paperwork from the closing.
It was disclosed in the closing?
That the exemptions were.
That I would be taxed for the, for the.
Just that the exemptions existed, so.
Oh, that the exemptions existed.
But the calculation of the taxes was.
Exemptions existed and if, according to the Department of Revenue, those exemptions should, should have remained until the next tax.
I, I believe his sale triggered in our office, somebody thinking, oh, well, that they no longer qualify for those exemptions, so we remove them. But the state law and the RSA's guide that that exemption continues, should, should continue through the following April.
He may very well be entitled to those exemptions, although he would not be entitled. There, there has been a reassessment as well, but you should have fallen into the category of the same taxes.
Yeah, so yeah, moving forward, he doesn't, their home doesn't qualify for those exemptions, but it should have still been applied during that year.
And it wouldn't have even, if I had just been taxed for my portion of the year, instead I was also taxed for Ms. Bissin's remainder portion, so yeah.
Totally agree with you, I'm not having any issues, I just wanted to clarify.
So, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so if you could get all that submitted to us, we can take it up at next week's meeting.
Do I give this to?
Yeah, anything you want to give to Susan right there and that'd be fantastic.
Is it all filled out? Is the abatement?
I haven't filled that out yet.
Any other public comment for public comment number one? You good, you good chief? All right. All right, committee liaison reports, I'll start with Ellie.
Let's see, I, I did a preliminary review of the exemptions that we have and I have not had a chance yet to go through it with Glenn. And we talked briefly tonight and I will be presenting that next Monday after he and I have had a chance to review it. It looks like we're way underneath, below most of our surrounding communities. And the only one I'm missing would be Epi, I need to get that.
Oh, your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, but we'll, we'll bring a final recommendation to the board next Monday on the exemptions for the town. And the only other thing, only other thing I had was still in abeyance is that an updated benefit package for our employees. And we didn't, haven't moved forward in that for a couple of reasons, mainly because of the wage matrix study committee. And we were going to be, we have, not formally to the board, but proposing updated matrices for both police and fire. That has an impact and any longevity clause we might have. And conversely, the, the missing piece also is on course reimbursement. So, and we don't have anything in the budget for that at this point. So I just wanted to let you know, we're, we're aware of the fact that we haven't put the benefit package in, but that wage matrix has taken priority. Until that's squared away, we can't really update the benefit package.
Glenn?
Let's see, two of my committee liaison activities met this past week, the museum committee. I think the one thing I wanted to report there is that partly based on some of the conversation that took place here a month or so ago, the, the museum will be having some additional regular open hours. And what they're going to do is on the first Tuesday of every month, they have a committee meeting and from 5:30 to 6:30. And so from 6:30 I believe to 8:00 or 8:30, they're going to be open regular hours. So the committee's already there and then the museum will be open to the public as well following that meeting. So it'll provide a little bit more access. So that was, that was good. The, the report, the report on the heating system is excellent. It works, I was in there for the meeting and, you know, the building was down at, at its regular, I think they leave it at 60 degrees, I think. But as soon as it was turned on, boy, it kicked right in. It brought the building to temp in no time. So it was, worked really well. The LED lighting conversion has taken place at that building and the lighting there is far superior. I mean, in addition to the savings, it's far superior to what it, what it was. The, the LED lights in the stack area toward the back is, it makes visibility significantly better. So, so that was all good news. And the other committee is heritage committee. And, you know, they had, they're, they're doing lots of things. I don't, trying to remember and I didn't bring my notes and I apologize, but I can't remember a specific thing to report to you other than the fact that they're, they're very active. The work on the Plain Cemetery has come to a stop as far as the cleaning of headstones and so forth, which is a big project of theirs, has stopped for now because of winter and they'll pick that up again in the, in the spring. There was also discussion about some buildings in town possibly applying for the state register of historic places, not the national register, but the state. And in particular, there was discussion about the tramp house because there are a number of tramp houses in New Hampshire, six or seven of them, that the preservation alliance has identified as part of their seven to save for this coming year. So they're grouped into a category and one of the recommendations by the preservation alliance is that the towns that have these particular buildings consider applying to, to the state division of historic resources to get them on the state register. So there, there will probably be some activity going on in that regard.
Okay. The planning board had one of its first public hearings on zoning articles last Tuesday. It only took us about 40 minutes to get through the first one. So it was, it was a lengthy evening. Some of the items were tabled, some of the language is going to be reviewed tomorrow night to, there is going to be a second hearing on zoning article. Zoning articles for the ones that were either, needed to be reworked or the public kind of gave some input that the board said, okay, it looks like there's an appetite to make some changes here before we propose it to move it to warrant. But some items have been voted on to be moved to the warrant, but then there'll be others that will kind of be talked about tomorrow that, but it'll still go to another public hearing, which I believe is on January 2nd will be the, the next public hearing for the remainder of those articles.
So Kingston days, we met last week. There were other people who did show up. We had a gentleman from Danville and a gentleman from Hampstead. And then we had two other residents. We don't have enough people for a steering committee. So the decision was made to try one more time. We're going to meet again the end of January. There's, people are talking and some of the folks who did show up, they, they got people who are willing to lead subcommittees, but nobody wants to be on the steering committee. So we're going to wait till after holidays and reconvene and hopefully, if not, that's it. Social services group, we're going to meet Thursday morning. And while we were at the collection center on Saturday, the volunteers had discussions and we agreed that our next one is, we're open the 23rd of December, but we agreed to open the following week as well to handle the influx of cardboard from the holiday and then the week after that. And then we also agreed to take Christmas trees. So we're going to put out word for that so people can bring their live dead trees at that point. So we'll be open three weekends in a row to cover, hopefully, you know, all of the extra cardboard and glass and live Christmas trees.
Will the trees get shredded?
Yes.
And will the town then use it, the remains for mulch and so forth, or will it be available to residents or?
We'll use it.
The town will use it. Got it. Thank you.
Perfect.
So we plan on publicizing that so people know that they can bring their trees for two weeks and, and do all of that. So we figured that would be a really good, good way also to boost word of the collection center and, and get more involvement.
All right, great. All right, moving on to old business, we're going to have a follow-up discussion. We did have a non-public discussion regarding some subcontractor plow drivers last week. That was kind of more specific to potential individuals, so we're going to be talking more globally. Hopefully we have some more information from the director of public works if you'd like to come forward. Maybe we can get some updates and hopefully we find a solution that'll help.
So I did some more research and the finance director also reached out to Primex. I think everyone's aware of my position that we don't want to change things at this point in the game. And I, I think we got a lot more information on what we should be doing with our subcontractors. One of the, the primary ones was having a, a contract established with, most of these are based on handshake deals from very long ago. And I, I think in this instance where we're looking at liability, we probably need to establish things a lot more firmly. I think in this instance where we're looking at liability, we probably need to establish things a lot more firmly. One of the main things, one of the main takeaways that I, in speaking with insurance agents beyond our, our carrier, was people with individual policies need to be able to name the town as additionally insured. And they felt that that should provide the town.
Okay.
Where the liability thing becomes questionable is, the gentlemen who work for us aren't really making any decisions in the process. They're awaiting a phone call from me or the superintendent to go out and do their route. From that, they are told how many times to do their route, what treatments to use, and things like that. So, the amount of liability, what this comprehensive liability would cover is if someone was neglectful in their duties. So, short of them driving off the road like a maniac, that's when they would be held liable. Beyond that, it is the town's liability, because as your representative, I am giving them instructions on what to do while conducting these activities.
And I, if I, you don't mind me just jumping in there, that was, you and I had a very good follow-up discussion on some of this later in the week. And I think that was one of the good points that was made, that separates this requirement that came back, because, and I think the description you gave to me is so, say we hired a company, say a landscaping company, we just said, hey, we want to hire you to be in charge of plowing the town hall. And we had no oversight, we just said, we have a contract that they're supposed to maintain it to a certain level, and Phil wasn't involved in it all. I think the major difference is kind of what he described, is that we don't have a company that's just coming out to do the plowing, whatever. They're at his direction for all things, whether the amount of salt, whether they're pre-treating with the, you know, that, that mixture that we put on the roads, how we're, and, you know, how, and the manner and the order in which everything gets done. So some of that liability ultimately falls back to the town, no matter what. So I think we're in, we, it made me feel a little bit better as how we're having to look at this insurance issue. I still, you know, I'm glad we got the follow-up information about that, but I just didn't want to, I think that was a good example that, information-wise, I think will benefit us in coming to make a, a decision.
But I'd like to piggyback on that, regardless of whether they had insurance or not, the town still has the deepest pockets, and we're going to be on the hook no matter what.
Correct.
So, that's not new news.
Yeah.
We knew that even last week. Just saying, they're going to come after, if there's a negligence of any sort, even if it's accidental negligence. I mean, you know how litigious people are.
Yeah. So I, I just wanted to jump in on that one example that you had explained to me, which I thought was very beneficial, if you want to continue.
And I, I think, I, I think it's worth further investigation whether this truly is a necessity for the town, if it's something that protects us when these situations arise. But, the, the problem we're going to face is this is an additional cost that we're putting on our subcontractors that we're going to have to absorb one way or the other, either through more minimum payments or more increased hourly wages for their efforts.
I'm sorry I'm sounding like I've given you a hard time, I know I am, but it's not deliberate. But it bothers me that we have an exposure year for drivers that contract with the town. If we are the only ones that make any issue of it, that's a whole other bother, I don't think we are.
I consulted five other towns in the surrounding area, none of them are requiring this of their subcontracted plow drivers.
When someone gets insurance, can't they just name us as insured, at least that much?
So I think the problem we're going to have is people with personal insurance, not business, or, or not. So there are drivers that we have who have insurance, but when you have personal insurance, you cannot name someone as additionally insured. And I think, given that situation, we're probably going to have to say goodbye to those drivers, if they can't meet at least the minimum requirement of having the town named as additionally insured on their vehicle liability policy. And this is, I've never met an insurance agent who doesn't want to sell insurance, and they explained to me that this is extraneous insurance for our, the way our, our system is set up with our subcontractors, that it's good to have, but it is not necessary. And, and I guess my position is, it's going to result in an increased cost to the town to require this of people. I think there are some contractors out there who have this just through the normal course of business, because they are plowing a parking lot, or they have an apartment complex that they have another truck on, and they have to have that. We have, one of our subcontractors has an apartment complex that he just has a tractor sitting in, he has a kid sitting in there just clearing that parking lot, because he is responsible for anything that happens in there. So, we may be able to find people who just have this as part of their, you know, their business, but we don't have that right now. We have two people who have that of our subcontractors.
So how many, how many does that leave out? You have two with it. You have two with it, how many that don't have it?
If we were to require the general liability policy, it would result in the loss of four pickups and one wing. So that'd be about 53% of the, or, I'm sorry, 47% of the plow force.
I'm probably going to abstain on this vote, because I don't want to vote no, but I do, so I'm going to abstain. But by the same token, I'm not going to support any increase in guaranteed hours, I'll tell you that right now, because you can't have it both ways.
I, I.
Not going to work.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
But I would like to see, you'd make me feel a lot better if you gave me six towns surrounding us and what they're, what they require, and when they have contracts, and whether they have insurance, I'll feel better. If you tell me Plasto, Hampstead, Epping, Exeter, none of them have it, I'll, I'll vote yes.
So I have the physical copies from Epping, Hampstead, and Danville, and it has the insurance requirements that they have in there, so I will certainly send those to you tomorrow morning.
And so if we, if we went this route, where, I guess at a minimum, we're just going to at least have them prove, they may not be able to name the town, but they're, they're going to have to provide a certificate of insurance showing that they at least have their own insurance, even if the town can't be named on it? And were we still going to have that, I know there was a contract, Paula, at one point? So at a bare minimum, if we went this route, would we still have them sign that contract and furnish a proof of insurance?
Yes. And, and again, I, last year was my first year, it worked, I didn't get into the weeds on it, but yes, I think we probably need to clean up our house and make sure that we are protected at the back door. And this is, I think, a first step as we take a more comprehensive look at it and, and really get into the weeds. But I think for where we are at right now, getting a contract, laying out minimums, and also establishing rates of pay for, you know, our contractors, so that's not all word of mouth.
All right, I'll, I'll be the lightning round as usual.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
So is the plan for next year to move towards a comprehensive liability? And, like, is that, are you advocating that this year it stays status quo, as long as they have a minimum of insurance? And the next year we're moving towards something more in-depth, or?
So I think the vehicle policy needs to have liability of a million dollars. The, the minimums that were laid out in the Finance Director's email from Primex, I think we need to meet those minimums. And if there are people who cannot, we should be able to replace them in some form or fashion.
Yeah, like I said, that's the, then that's what I, I called my insurance company, I said, hey, on this truck, if I wanted to plow for the town and wanted to update it to a million dollars to plow for them, what would that cost? And it was, it was not a lot.
Right.
It was, I think it was $67 per, extra per, every six months.
And I think with the current minimum setup that we have, it is not an unreasonable ask of our subcontractors to provide that to us.
Paula, did you have something specific you want to put in?
So you said that if you tell them how, what they're supposed to do and everything, then that is not a subcontractor, that's an employee. Definition of an independent contractor is if you perform services that, you can, if you perform services that can be controlled by an employer, what will be done and how it will be done, this applies even if you are given freedom of action. What matters is that the employer has legal right to control the details of how the services are performed, then you are not an independent contractor.
So we may have a bigger can of worms to work out.
And, and that's exactly what my accountant tells me with the subcontractor I have, who, she's like, do you tell them when to show up? Do you tell them what to do every day, and so that?
Oh, I thought I was done. Sorry.
So, again, I think it's, most of our actions are guided by what everybody else is doing. And I think to, to get into the weeds and see what the other towns are doing is beneficial on this, yes.
So I, I will move a motion here shortly to allow a certain, with the contract and a certain minimum levels of insurance, but I, I think we need to charge the two of you with a priority project as we move into this new year, that this has to be reviewed and addressed prior to next year. I understand the position that we're in, and, you know, your concerns, I mean, we, we are in snow season, we've been fortunate that there hasn't been much yet, but we are right in the middle of it, and any day, things could change.
I, I know we talked a little bit last week, but I think you should talk to NHMA. There, every town has that same exposure, why aren't they offering us an opportunity to come, to pool, to have a bigger pool to, to insure accordingly? I'm surprised they don't, I really am surprised they don't, because it's a, it's a universal problem to small towns like ours.
So I think that can probably be first steps for Paul and I, scheduling a meeting with one of the NHMA council, and just, we can sit in and, and bounce the questions off of them and see what they have to say. I, I did reach out to NHMA, and they did quite steadfastly say that with regards to coverage amounts and, and your insurance, they are not going to weigh in. But I think they could also be a guide to us to understand what our exposure is as it sits.
It's also the whole point of contractor and employee, like, that's where the big thing is.
Okay. Any further comments by the board? That being said, I, did you, oh, you, well, may?
Why don't I wait for your motion, okay, because you might cover it in that.
My, my motion will be that unless rescinded, that we will authorize the Director of Public Works to continue with the subcontractors for plowing needs through the plowing season, which would end in the spring of 2024, that they would be able to continue, provided that they provide at least a minimum coverage of a million dollars, and they are required to sign the contract that was proposed by the Finance Director, as gathered, and they have to provide us with certificates of proof of insurance, meaning their requirements of the million dollars as recommended. Any friendly amendments?
Well, I'll, I'll second it for, to get it on the table.
Yep.
I, I, you, you pretty much covered it. Also with the understanding that between now and, long before we get to next plow season, we've, we've got a, we've got a plan on how to move forward, which will give the town the protection that it needs, how we determine that. And on the, I realize that on the personal policies, we can't have a named insured, so we, we, we wouldn't be under that. But for those who have business liability, we should get copies of their policies with us as a named insured.
Okay, I'll, I'll amend it to have that requirement for those that do have the general liability policy, that we get a copy naming the town as additionally insured.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. All right, we, on old business, the consultant search for the support for the Poet installation, RFP and bids. Any quotes received by 4:00 PM would have been in our packets, so did we just end up with the one?
Just the one, it's in there.
So we received one quote from the RFP, which was Verdantis. And this would be for the writing and administration of the RFP for the Poet installation, is that a correct description of that, Susan?
To help us create a new request for proposals, the specifications, and then to help us review the bids.
Okay.
In their quote, they include oversight of the construction as well, so that may or may not be something we need from them.
Okay, and this is, this is eligible to be reimbursed through the grant as well, the work that they would conduct?
Yeah.
Okay. I obviously don't want us to have any delays on this, are they ready to, we make a motion tonight, are they ready to get right to work? Because we need that RFP.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, that, that's assuming that all the tasks are needed, and there's a, is there a question about whether or not Task Five is needed, Susan?
I'm not looking at it, are you looking at where they oversee?
Construction inspections.
And I don't know if we need them to do that.
Yeah, and that's, and so that one was, yeah, and that was, cost assumes that inspections can be combined in less, but that's just noted, less than eight or less mobilizations. But I would say, yeah, I would approve it with the town deciding whether or not they need those constructions inspections, because I think that would be done with the installation of the systems due to the contract of whoever selected.
Depending on the company that we hire and what.
Right, and, and so, and so whatever motion we put forth on this should be a not to exceed value, or up to, or something.
Yeah.
Not just that it's a flat 24/9 that we're authorizing.
Correct.
Not to exceed 24.
Correct.
So I, I think maybe the most appropriate motion would be a motion to approve the contract up to $24,900 with the provision that the town would need to authorize Task Five.
Yes.
Yes, that's good.
Yep.
So I would take that motion.
So moved.
Further discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so if we can reach out to them tomorrow, because we need that.
So, just to understand the rest of the process, so they're going to help with the RFP, right? Yes. And then we're going to submit it, or, or put it out for bid? We have to send it to DES for approval. It has to go to DES for approval? Yeah. Okay. And then we post it to get the contractor in place. But when those bids come in, they help us review the bids and tabulate the bids, which then also go back to DES. Once we have chosen a contractor and it's approved by DES, we can put them to work.
And as a follow-up, and it's probably going to be, I think we're going to have to discuss it in non-public, if we can schedule it for the next meeting, the invoice for the incomplete and non-thorough work from Sanborn. I, I know Susan's, we started talking about some information, but they came back, but I think because of the nature, it's going to be a bit of a negotiation, we're going to have to discuss it in a non-public.
Yes.
So if we can schedule that for next week.
For next time.
Yeah. Okay, the elderly exemption guidelines, Ellie already talked, talked about, so we're going to, next, next meeting, we'll have some possibly updated numbers to put forward as a warrant for the elderly and disability exemptions. 47 Newton Junction Road, we did receive an update, our, our other building inspector was able to visit the site. You kind of wanted to, I know you had sent out some information.
I just had the message from Mike Dorman, he did go out, he couldn't get in, because it's pretty solidly boarded up. And he said if anyone wants to go out with him and bust in there, but judging from the outside, he wasn't confident that the inside was in great shape. But there is a car out there, a junk car under a tree, as described, so.
Chief, Chief, are you looking for any training opportunities?
So there's no one living there right now?
No.
Okay.
But before you light it up.
I did check on that a little bit today, just because I was coming up with Tammy. You bought the house approximately a year ago, or took it over for taxes.
Right.
Because I said if it's that bad, let's dump it, but you got to wait, technically, you have to wait three years.
No, you missed some updated information in our packets last week, that there's been complete changes to the law, and there's no benefit, not only do towns not have to hold on to it for three years, there's actually no benefit, because the laws have been created that the town doesn't really get to keep the surplus funds, you have to jump through so many hoops to return excess funds to the person from which the property was seized for taxes. So we'll get you some, I'll get you the backup information.
So we're better off clearing the property and leaving it vacant, and, and letting the fire department use it as an exercise.
Sammy doesn't know that, so that'd be good to do that. My, my concern is exactly what Ellie says, if it ultimately is the towns, we need to get the car. the car out. We need to take the, you know, tear the house down for that, and then we're gonna have to spend some money.
So Chief, you may have a vehicle that you can do vehicle extraction training with and you may have a a yeah, a house to do a controlled burn on.
And so and so when this all happens and the lot is essentially cleared.
That's it.
Then we would probably want to sell it?
Yeah, I think because of that, there's no benefit to holding on to it long term. It seems like we would want to start that process of.
Right.
And I believe we still do have to put out notification 90 days.
Correct.
Sure, sure. We have to try and find the previous.
They have the option of buying it back, I guess.
Right, whatever the process is, it's just that if there's no benefit to waiting.
So we could we just double check on whether or not before we take any action with it, such as a controlled burn or getting rid of a vehicle?
That we have time.
If that 90-day notice has to happen prior to that. Because I don't want to have to rebuy somebody a house that was gonna need to be torn down anyway.
At current prices?
Yeah. Okay.
So it's a it's a lot. It's a lot of record, which means that someone could
Build a lot, yeah.
Could build a home on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, next item, we have audio visual needs, cameras, where to budget, sound on the cable channel. Adam, are you gonna come out of the booth for this one?
I suppose I can come out. So. Sound, audio, that's what we were, sound, audio, that's what we were just talking about, just asking about. So I am still working on the cameras, Chuck. The company that we've. Want us to. Talk to us and they've been bought by some large company. It doesn't, it does not inspire confidence, we'll say, and they they will not work with us on that. I've reached out to a couple other companies. Nobody's getting back to me. I'm trying to reach out for some more. No one's responding, no one's answering my my messages, so I wish I had better information. I wish I had any information on that, but that's where we stand right now. Just nobody's, nobody's gotten back to me about the cameras.
And just so we can kind of update folks, what happened? So we put in a new piece of equipment that would allow for the live streaming and now there's we have a sound issue or a lack of sound issue or?
Okay.
Buy more or less?
Impossible.
Before you even go there, can we talk to Gordon Parks over at the high school?
What am I talking to? Are we still on the cameras or we moved to the sound? I'm not just, I'm not being, I just.
Okay, two different issues.
Yeah, there are two completely different issues. That's the camera is one thing. The camera is just, we want to upgrade the cameras. The sound, as far as the streaming goes, streaming was fine, continues to be fine, better than it was actually. The trouble is, so we did get the new, the replacement component in. I have replaced the replacement component and we do have that set up. I can, I have camera control. I can switch between cameras again. But when that went out, it also took out the sound and I just. I can do a lot, I like to think, but there are certain things that are just beyond me because I I pull, everything came out, one port went in, another port on the, came out, the old one went into the new one. It was one to one. So I don't know why, when we restored the broken component, we do not have sound on the cable still. I wish I knew. I would love to know, but that's why I I'm kind of thinking that when the company that changed our audio redid everything, maybe they just didn't connect everything because that that piece wasn't working at the time. That's why I talked to Susan, Susan had talked to Phil.
So I guess, if we could.
Somebody was gonna talk to the company, the audio company to see if they could come in and fix that.
Anything we, if we have to have somebody just come in and take a look so we can at least get a quote for what's physically needed or what type of work needs to be done, we just want to do that sooner or later. So for my budget committee friends that are here, I would not plan on us advocating for a current reduction in that line that we had asked for. I know we were waiting on some info. We were hoping we might be able to reduce that line, but I think at this time, with us kind of being in the unknown, it's very important that we support that infrastructure, so.
I am going to say, do not hold me to this, please, but encouragingly, I don't think that the problem with the audio is a big problem. I think there's a cable somewhere that I just don't know where the cable is and it's entirely possible somebody who knows the system better can walk in, say, oh, here's the problem. This isn't plugged in right. It's a five-second fix with equipment we have on hand. So I'm not anticipating coming into you guys and saying, I need another $20,000 to fix the audio. That is not what I'm anticipating.
Well, we definitely don't have that much budget.
And that's why I just, that's why this is not a, oh, we need to spend a lot of money on this. This is just a, we need to get somebody who has more expertise on this than I do.
Which is why I'm suggesting Gordon Parks.
Gordon, yes.
Because they have streaming at the high school. They don't seem to have any problems and maybe that one, they know where that cable is. I'm just.
No, I, you know what? I hadn't even thought about Gordon. I'll give, I might even see him tomorrow. I don't know. It depends, but I will, I will get in touch with Gordon and see. Yeah, absolutely. Again, my apologies, when you brought up Gordon, I was still thinking cameras. I was like. No, no, I I get it.
So just just see if they can help you and if not, if we have to have somebody else come and take a look, but it's important that we just get it working, everything working correct.
Again, knock on wood, that's gonna be an easy thing. I think it's just, you know, it's one of those things, you put everything together, but you miss that one little piece and suddenly nothing's working and you just find that piece and oh, problem solved. The cameras, that's gonna be a more involved process.
All right.
And I apologize again for the delays.
So so you're gonna continue to chase down a source for the cameras?
I'm still working on the cameras. Getting the cameras is not the not the not the difficult part of the of the whole affair. You can, we can just go to the company that makes the cameras and just buy the cameras. It's getting them installed that I'm not as confident on, especially because I believe we are changing from SD cameras to HD cameras, which is probably gonna require some some wiring work in the back, in the background, which plugging things in and unplugging them, I can do that. Wiring is way outside my 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 area of expertise.
Okay.
Need even more reason to talk to Gordon.
Yeah, I'll talk to Gordon. I'm not sure because the I know they, I'm not arguing. I know the the cameras at the school are a whole different beast because they're.
Well, in the interest of time, I'll let you guys figure that out.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I haven't, yes, thank you for cutting me off. Sorry, I would have.
Anytime.
Was there anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Related, this is the bill for the audio visual. We have, just make a decision if you want to withhold some of it and pay the rest because we're still waiting on microphones.
We're not paying. We would wait forever.
Not that you want to talk about this anymore, but just to confirm what I, it's very hard to find anyone who wants to come in and sort through your old crap that's put together and just make it work for you. I I think that's a great idea to, I didn't even think of that, reaching out to the high school. As far as the people who potentially did damage to one of the things, their position right from the get-go was that that was broken. So I don't think they're gonna be forthcoming with a fix to fix what they didn't break in their mind.
Recommendation, do you have a recommendation on withholding any audio video payments for things that haven't been done?
So we're still waiting on three more microphones. I spoke with Paula, I think initially on that I wrote $1,000 and then we did some quick math. It should probably be three to $4,000 retained, but until we get those microphones.
These mic?
Yeah, we have two more of these that were due and then we have a hand, actually, there's a lapel mic, there's four, sorry, four. So yeah, $4,000 would probably be what I put in there. The chair would have a lapel mic and then you could have a hand mic that the audience could use.
So the recommendation would be that we of the balance due of $16,633.12 that we withhold approximately $4,000 of that?
Yes.
Take that as a motion. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One more thing?
Yes.
Backing up a little bit while we're on the cameras. Originally, I had originally talked about maybe getting the cameras through the ARPA funds. And I don't know how much is in the budget per se for that, but you know, it's just rather than trying to wait and if the budget doesn't get turned in, I mean, if the budget doesn't get passed, so I was kind of hoping that he had something tonight because I was gonna, you know, move to when we try to do that.
And I think we were just, we're still kind of waiting on quotes for the HVAC and infrastructure upgrades in the town hall too.
When are those gonna come in? I mean, we've been waiting on that for a significant amount of time.
But and and that's what I had, I had told, we had told the budget committee that we're hopeful that we'll be able to source some of these AV items out of that. And I think if we came forward with actual numbers of it actually what we do, I think we'd be willing to do a vote on that out of ARPA funding, but I would just say for the time being, please still leave it in the proposed budget.
So the other question I had while we're on that was that back in the early budget times, the planning board had come in and talked about a printer for their particular office side there rather than trying to run everything through the other printers and being in conflict with with the work being done. So I did get, and I suggested that they not put the money in the budget and try to see what we can find elsewhere. I did get some information about what the printer is that they might think they need, and I don't know anything about it. We'd have to look further into it, but it's approximately $8,000 for the computer and $500 for the supply contract for the year.
Well, I I can say the budget committee overwhelmingly removed any potential funding that was in there.
No, I understand that. And then I asked them to do that because I thought maybe this is something that we could also do.
And this, I guess that I would not feel comfortable until we got our other infrastructure numbers in. I guess I wouldn't be comfortable putting that forward for the planning board out of the ARPA funding where I'd rather put the priority on the audio visual out of ARPA funding and then wait till we get the other infrastructure upgrades.
Okay. I'm just presenting it. I'm just trying, I mean, I tried to keep it out of the budget for eight grand.
Lincoln yelling me tomorrow night.
Might be able to, you know, push it through there along with the camera stuff, but if it's not a priority and there's not, if Susan doesn't have a big conflict with one printed, you know, she's getting ready to print something at Torrey and they want to do 500 pages and the planning boards got something out there to do. I mean, I don't know if there's.
It's only an issue when there's a meeting with a bunch of things she needs to print and it's never really interfered with us because Robin will just stay and do it at the end of her day. I'm not sure that's always been convenient for her and.
Well, maybe we need to talk to her a little bit more to make it a little more convenient when there's a big proposal come through, but it seems like an awful lot of money for.
It does, especially for a resource that 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 could very well be shared if we could just work out the timing.
Right, right, right.
And the scheduling.
Logistics.
We will come into another copier at some point. That one is aging and it, for instance, won't copy with the three-hole punch, it'll slide.
No.
So some things she can't, but she'll have to come upstairs and do that. So eventually we need another one, then we can keep them both and have two, but.
Not there yet.
Be on the radar.
Yeah, we're not ready for $8,000. Spanish.
You did a, you did a great effort, Chuck. Okay, new business, we have the revised welfare guidelines to approve. I know there was just some final.
Yeah, Marissa and I are still going back and forth on some questions because she's still trying to get some answers. So we're gonna try to meet early next week and finalize the comments and questions that I have. I don't know if anybody else provided input to her.
I didn't send anything. I bet my thought they were pretty concise.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know I had seen some of the other, you know, towns that she had pulled some of that information from and some other communities and I thought she did a good job of putting.
Oh, yeah, no, it looks great. I mean, and there's just, there's like only two or three comments. So we'll try to maybe get together the end of this week, but if not, it'll be next week. So we should be able to finalize it after that.
Okay. We had an item under here, select board initiatives. I know there was discussion that as a board, maybe we should come up with a list of goals that we're essentially want to work on during the year that we're not completely reactive in everything that we're doing and that we maybe come up with some targeted initiatives that we want to, you know, set as a goal for the upcoming year. I don't know if anyone has any items that they'd put on that or is this, we did read this one up?
Of course I do.
Or or do you want, or do you want?
I'm not very.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, I mean, if in a in a similar scenario, the planning board, at least they used to, at the beginning of each year after the new board was constituted after the town meeting, one of their first meetings, they would establish a set of goals for the year and projects they wanted to work on and so.
I think it'd be, why don't we, if anyone has any items that they'd like to put on that, why don't we put it on for next week? And I think it'd be good to have a baseline of items that this current board, even though it could change substantially in the upcoming year and that if there's a, you know, a new board and they want to focus on what their goals are, they should set them, but I think it'd be good to have a list coming from this board of things that have kind of come up. A lot of times stuff, oh, yeah, we should definitely do that. And then it kind of gets put on the back burner and you're dealing with other things, but I think it would be good to have a working list of people like, you know, we did, we did think that was important to move forward too. So why don't we, why don't we have everyone, if you have items that you want to put on that, we'll submit it for next week and we put together a list of everything that we think that would be good to continue addressing. Let's see, the review, the proposed warrant articles, the latest update is in the packet. So I mean, there are still some draft numbers in here because they need to go back to.
Building part-time, that's in your packet.
When and so, yeah, and when is our, when is our final, when is our date to have these announced for public? Because we have to have a public hearing.
I think they're by January.
We should know that soon. We need to know.
Yeah.
Because we're running out of time.
Well, legally, legally citizens petition warrant articles and everything can still go until.
They have until January 9th, I think, if I've got the date right.
Okay.
It's February 3rd.
February 3rd.
Right, the articles have to be in by, I think it's the 9th, but I'll double check.
January 6th, okay, that's good. January 6th, but so the one item that we were gonna be putting forward, you know, by the recommendations of the planning board is we want to revisit the full-time land use administrator position. So we need to make sure we get all those calculations together. I know Paula has been working on that with salary benefits, so.
Just as an FYI, the February 3rd date is the earliest date to hold first session of town meeting.
Yeah.
That is not a deadline for.
That's the one we're using, right? That's a deliberate session.
Yes, that's correct. That's, yes.
There are numbers in here for the land use.
Yep.
I don't have them yet for a part-time building, but that won't include any benefits. So it should be pretty easy to calculate once you decide what you want the hourly to be.
One of the questions I have, and you have to figure out, we, there are different departments to fire in the highway. India, they have $100,000. We haven't heard from them as to what amounts of money they're gonna want to put in as to for us to decide. So we probably need that, those figures soon.
These are, these are.
Those are almost that.
Yeah, so these.
Everybody's gonna put in for the $100,000 this year.
There's like three of them.
Okay.
I haven't heard for sure that they're putting them in, so they're still in red.
For the gray sailing. Okay. All right, so we have a little more time on those, but we are gonna have to just come to some decisions on those soon. Yeah, we're getting tight. Okay. Decide on if we're to meet on December 18th. I think we've decided we're absolutely having a meeting and the preferences to be here.
Be here. From what Marissa said today, I think it won't be any worse than it is now.
Okay.
If there is a big problem and we have to move.
I mean, it's standing room only.
Yeah.
Bangin' down the doors. Rick won't mind sharing it with the toys.
So then let's, I think we just reaffirm that it's gonna be here. Yeah. Public comment number two. I only got you that one time to come up, Rick. Okay, we will close public comment number two. Under correspondence, we do have. Okay, uh, we will close public comment number two, uh, under correspondence, we do have uh, some correspondence applications, purchase orders, uh, I passed around some stuff in the purple folder, I believe, I, it was the thing on top there. We have some payroll in there, payroll items, we did have an item in here for general assistance, it looks like everyone had an opportunity to look at that, so we don't really need to floor over any of those. We do have one permanent application for property tax credit exemption, this is a veteran's tax credit for a surviving spouse, it appears that all the paperwork is here inappropriate, so if anyone want to go through and sign those, that seems appropriate, start sending it down, and, all right, let's go into, so this would be a new, uh, tax, tax credit abatement, we didn't discuss this one previously.
Yeah, three of, three of those you approved last week, but I neglected to put in the tax form for the tax collector, so you're signing that piece.
So we have, yeah, we have to sign that actual.
And then there are two new ones there.
Okay, so this looks like a new one, this one's for One Door Road, uh, the veteran's tax credit was incorrectly removed for tax years 2021 and 2022, and the tax credit should have remained on the property, uh, it is recommended that the granted, it be granted to correct the 2021 and 2022 removals, uh, if granted, it would result in an abatement in the amount of $1,000, uh, reference Door Road, so this appears to, it should not have been removed. Any further questions on that? Take a motion to approve the tax abatement for One Door Road, that would result in the abatement amount of $1,000.
Tell me.
All right, so I don't know which one gets credit, whatever one Susan wrote down. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so, and we all, we all have to sign these, correct? So I'll pass everything to the right. Okay, perfect, sorry, sorry, Chuck. Can only make half the people happy, I can barely do that. Uh, so the next one we have is, we have a property at 24 Second Street. It looks like the, so I'll, I'll read the recommendation of the, it says, it's recommended that it, uh, no documentation or evidence was provided to show support for a lower assessment, and it's been recommended that this abatement be denied, as no opinion of value or evidence to show support for a lower assessment was provided, uh, and so it appears as though, you know, they're making, uh, a plea that, you know, the increased tax rate is very difficult to pay on a fixed income, uh, limited possibilities, but it, it appears they provided no information that would sustain an abatement based off of the assessors, there's nothing indicating that the assessment of the property was incorrect, it just seems that, I mean, I understand these folks are having a difficult time, but if I don't, it doesn't state their age or anything on here, but they're claiming about fixed income and social security, but maybe hopefully our provisions that we're gonna take up in increasing the elderly tax exemptions, or any other exemptions will, you know, potentially help someone in this need, but, uh.
So the recommendation is to deny, and that's from our assessor.
From our assessor, the recommended, recommend that the abatement be denied.
I'll, I'll make the motion to follow the assessor's recommendation and deny the request.
Okay, second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, this is the same one, we have that form that we have to sign. There we go, so this one was the, we already, the One Seventh Street, we already voted on.
Yeah, there are three of them there.
That was voted to approve last week.
You'll see, they're all signed, but it, it's the new form on top that.
Okay, so now we need this form.
Yeah, that's just directing Tammy to refund that.
Okay. Same thing with 28 Webster Grove Road, we had already voted on this one. Oh, is it, is it two places on that? Looks like they're asking two selection signatures on this page, and then there's.
Can't just write it in there.
I'm gonna deny it, yeah. And then we have another, the third one that you mentioned, 64 North Road in Kingston, uh, which had already been voted to be approved, we just need to sign the new form. So there's those three, I'm gonna sign them all, so. Selectmen, assessors, yeah. Okay.
The second day.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that one, I might have grabbed a couple, grabbed a couple things from that one, because that one, too close, sorry. All right, but you guys get, you guys got the tax credit, yeah, so that one's good. Just a selectman or assessor signature. Right, everybody approve that, I mean, there's, there's actually four slots, so I think just make a fifth one, yeah. Make a fifth one, everyone's on it. Okay, we addressed that. So we have the abatements, the veteran's tax, nothing, nothing else I'm missing?
No, I think that's it, there, there is information that I just gave you last minute, just for your consideration, also to support the building part-time, um, there's a lot of work that goes on in the assessing department as well, and one big thing right now is finding out if the commercial and industrial properties were assessed correctly for the reval, it looks like they didn't have the same amount of increase that, you know, so, between Tammy and Tori, they're, they're looking.
Yeah, when you look at the townwide average being 57, almost 58%.
Seems like something could be wrong there, so.
All right, so, and so they're still looking into this further?
Yes, yeah, I just wanted you to be aware, what's going on.
All right. Okay, those, yeah, folder right there.
In the assessing contract that we currently have, when, that one, oh?
December 3rd.
So do you think we'll have enough information for them to go redo those?
I'm, I'm, we're trying to work with them as much as we can before they're done, and then it will be on to the next company.
Yeah, I've seen, yeah, but it'd be nice for the consistency to have.
Then finish it, finish it up.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen two of them in the office at times, like, working away on, on issues that have come up, um, and I just did see one other thing in here, you had just the 2023 permit logs to date.
Yes, um, I think there's a, there's a, the one page in there that tells you the number of permits total.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have the full permit log, if you wanted to look at it, it's, you can ask Tori for one anytime, it's kind of massive, this is what she does, she does a whole spreadsheet of everything that comes in, and, you know, as it's inspected, where it stands, if it's paid for, everything, it's on there, so.
I wonder how this fits in with our revenue.
Yeah, I don't know, they, they take in quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah, I don't remember the estimated revenue one for permitting.
Well, and this is for 2023 to date, and that total, um, is gonna come close to covering our building inspector co- enforcement person.
But, this is, this is, this is all the, this is all the inspectors.
I understand.
And the fees charged, they may be some in there that weren't collected.
It's a substantial number.
Yeah, it's a considerable amount.
Yeah, there may be some in there that weren't actually received yet.
Yeah.
But it's out there to be paid.
Excellent.
I think she said there was a couple that, yeah.
Okay, um, the, uh, we do need the approval, we do need to approve the meeting minutes, both public and non-public, let's take these separately, because I need to give you some notes from the rest of the non-public to draft.
Yes, and, and actually, I didn't complete the first non-public, so if you want to do those next time, or.
Yeah, so I'll just communicate with you, I, I have, I kind of came up with a couple quick sentences that I think that will cover the topic of the discussion, to make sure we fulfill that. Um, so why don't we take a, take a motion to approve the public meeting minutes from December 4th?
Yeah, so moved.
All right, any further discussion on those? All those in favor? Aye. And we'll just, I'll take a motion that we table approval of any non-public meeting minutes regarding December 4th until next meeting.
So moved.
All right, did I get a second?
Second.
Second, all right, all those in favor?